All right, good evening. Tonight is, you need a minute? You good? Tonight is Monday, July 11th, 2022 at 7:00. And this is Committee of the Whole for the City of Gehanna. The first item under our discussions tonight is an update from the Parks and Recreation Department. Director Farrell.
Thank you.
Would you rather sit?
So I am Stephanie Farrell, Director of Parks and Recreation, and thought this was a fitting time to give an update here, believe it or not. Halfway through the summer season, that's our summer season, of course. We'll hang on to summer a little longer here in Ohio. So I want to focus really on our seasonal operations. So you won't see anything from our senior center or our general recreation programming. I'll say that for another time. So we'll focus on our seasonal operations. How? It's like a hair dryer.
Plug it in. So, there we go. So some updates with our staffing. We have a new aquatics supervisor who started before the aquatic season. Chris Simmons came aboard. He was actually from the Gehanna Y Branch. And we were able to recruit him over to our supervisor for aquatics. We also had a promotion of Annette Baxter. She was our recreation coordinator. She was promoted to a supervisor. Did leave a vacant position with our coordinator as well as administrative assistant. Those are actually pending offers. We had some challenges getting those positions filled. There were multiple offers. Unfortunately, those were declined. A lot of variable different reasons, pay, schedules, those types of things. So those offers are pending, hopeful to get those in place quickly. We did backfill the horticulturist position with Miranda Gessner. She has started and is doing a phenomenal job with our team. Also Aurelio Dismook, he is our general maintenance worker. This was a position that was open at the beginning of the year. We transitioned two part-time positions into a full-time position. That has been very successful with us. We've been able to maintain those staff members rather than a lot of the turnover with our part-time staff. And then also Chelsea Hepburn, she started as our recreation coordinator too, focusing on special events. So rounding out a lot of, a lot of new faces, a lot of transitioning and orientation to the department. Moving on to summer camp. So we are in week six of nine weeks for our major camp. You'll see there, there are multitude, there are three camps that we program internally. So our staff are the ones who train staff and organize the program. The other two are by a third party. You'll notice that I have the age groups here and then the number of weeks that the camps are available and then the camp hours. On the far right, the spaces available, that's for the entire summer. One thing to note is that we do have an accreditation through the American Camp Association. And that does require a ratio of campers to counselors. We did have to reduce the total number of campers that we were able to program because of the total number of staff. We would typically like to see 25 to 30 counselors. We have 11. So we had to reduce those totals severely. With that, we also, with 11 counselors, that's if there's any vacation requests, if there's any time off, we're taking a lot of our, they're called recreation crew members. And those staff are able to be versatile with any type of program that we have. So those individuals work the paddle boats at the creekside as well as special events. So we do cross-train those individuals in order to be able to maintain our ratios. For aquatics, I, oop, I think I went out there. Okay. I know this is a really busy slide. This is an attendance from the beginning of the aquatic season to date. The 2019 number is a true reflection. We still saw some COVID effects from 2021. So I thought it was beneficial for you to see attendance from 19. And from left to right, we have memberships from GSP and Hunter's Ridge. As a pool member, you do have the ability to go to either pool. And we do track that participation there just to see who's coming where and how often. We also track our day passes. So we have, new of 2021, a non-resident rate was included into the passes. So that's why you won't see that in 2019, that started in 2021. You'll also notice our memberships are starting to bounce back from 2020, 2021. Obviously, 2020, the pools were not open. That's why those numbers aren't being recorded. Going to go to the next one because I thought it was important to pull out the Gehanna Swimming Pool totals. You'll see that there has definitely been an incline of participation for this year specifically. There's, there's a lot of, a lot of people that we're seeing. We're over 3,000, and that's to date. So we still have quite a, quite a few weeks left to go. We have about four weeks left to the season. With that, we have, of course, our staffing, you're going to hear that a lot. We typically want to staff about 70 to 80 guards. We had 56 that were in the queue. However, 35 of those were able to go through a lifeguard class. So we host four lifeguard classes. And that way, the, it's about a 40-hour session for the guards to be able to be certified. We, of course, have to have certified lifeguards. If they're not certified, then we, of course, can't have them in the stands. So we had 35 successfully go through the certification class. So our guards are, we don't have as many guards as we would like to see. Again, when you're talking about staffing the pools on a regular basis as well as vacations, those types of things. We need to have as many guards as possible. And with these numbers that I'm saying, we have a high volume of people and we have a lot of guards who are working a lot of hours. They've been doing a phenomenal job. We've had an influx of behavioral issues at the pools. We actually had the opportunity to have a SRO come out periodically just to have a presence there. It is not something that is only in Gehanna. We do communicate with our peer communities. And it's something that is, has been on the incline throughout, throughout the industry. So some communities have gone to variable different types of ways of managing it. Thankfully, our, our staff have been able to manage the situations of behavior. But again, that takes away from their ability to scan water. It also unfortunately takes their experience away. These are, a lot of these staff members are, it's their first time. It's their first time having a job. We want this to be a positive experience for them. So it is something that we are definitely cognitively of and making sure that we're taking the proper approach to these situations. Golf, it's, I hate to say it this way, but COVID was one of the best things that happened to golf. Golf is definitely on an incline. There's been great participation there. You'll see in April, there, there was a dip and that was ultimately because of the available days that the course was open. It was open for 18 days and some of those days weren't a full day. So that's why you see a dip there. Outside of that, we are, we are tracking very well and will continue to. This past weekend, we had a record weekend for tee times at the course. So we'll continue on. Our golf course supervisor does a phenomenal job, Joe Hebdo, of making sure that the greens are phenomenal. We get a lot of positive feedback about how great the course looks on a regular basis, also understanding that it floods. So there's a possibility that it flooded on Monday, you come on Thursday, you would never know. So they do a phenomenal job. Moving on to, we are in the process of our comprehensive Parks Master Plan. We have, we're on track to have a published plan to bring to council in October. So the, we are on track to, to continue that. What's been done thus far, demographics and trends. So the consultants, pros consultings have pulled information from Gehanna specifically, also looking at trends of Parks and Recreation as an industry. So that has actually already been completed and that will be incorporated into the finalized plan. Also focus groups and interviews. I know some of you actually participated in some or both of those. So thank you so much for your participation. That is also going to be compiled later on, you'll see a survey. So some of you also may have received a hard copy survey in the mail to request some information and feedback of the Parks and Recreation Department specifically. That link for the virtual survey will be published by Wednesday of this week. So requesting a lot of information, a lot of participation with that survey because again, that just helps us compile what the community is looking for as a whole in regards to Parks and Recreation. A site assessment, pros consultants actually came out and did a review, the first review. This will be one of three. So they came out to multiple different parks and took an assessment of what is there, what some improvements could be done and basically gave it a rating. They'll ask us to do, that's something that we will do still to come. They'll ask us to do the same thing and then compare the ratings together. So of course, we've seen some improvements that we were able to meet, to see. But then having a third party evaluate the same things, it'll give us a lot of feedback that we need. And then a benchmark analysis. So we sent out information to five different other agencies for Parks and Recreation and to compare what their agencies are doing to what the City of Gehanna is doing. So again, all good feedback. And this is comprehensive. So it's a 10-year capital improvement plan. This is an operational maintenance overview, staffing overview, recreational programming. So it's everything that we do will be all compiled. And this document, of course, will be used for the next 10 years or beyond. Some capital improvements that we have, and this is all thanks to the Capital Maintenance Program funded by issue $12. This is not an exhaustive list, but this is some, some things that we've been able to accomplish this year, either in the works or have been completed. One thing, and I note this regularly just because I know you all see the Senior Center sign. The sign, there will be 12 park signs that will be improved and completely, that one will be taken down and a new one will be going up. So we'll be very excited to see that happen. You also know the Headley Playground was completed. There was some drainage concerns and we knew that that, the trail coming from the playground would need to be replaced. That has been done and has definitely improved that, that walkability there. Another thing worth noting, the splash pad had a portable restroom and that was temporary. Ultimately, the, we were unfortunately waiting on some parts for the restroom that's outside of the pool facility. So we unfortunately are not immune to the demands of shipment issues. So that has been completed, it is done. So thankfully, there is a restroom that is, that is at the splash pad that's available outside of the pool operation hours. It's of course, much better than the porta potty that was there. So we're happy to see that open. They'll also serve as a rest stop for the trail. As you know, the big one that trail goes right alongside the pool property. So if someone's using the trail, they're able to use the restroom facility as a rest stop. So that'll serve as, as a, as a dual purpose. Well, we're on the splash pad. There's obviously been some, some feedback about the splash pad and the ability for it to be open outside of the pool season. So I just wanted to have the opportunity to talk about that, give a little bit of a history about how we came to this today and explain some of the, some of the use that we've, we've seen thus far. So the splash pad at the inception was to be an amenity of the, of the pool facility. The Gehanna Swimming Pool was something that the city acquired. It's not something that the city had, had built. It's not uncommon for pool facilities to have a splash pad as part of the amenity. Maybe not typical for it to come after the fact. We did have the opportunity, Pickerington Community did build a splash pad after the original pool was, was open. So we did have coordination with the City of Pickerington as well as of how they manage their project and how they move forward. But ultimately, the splash pad created an opportunity for either young swimmers or non-swimmers. Because if you've ever visited the Gehanna Swimming Pool, the lowest depth is two feet. So if for a toddler, for, for a, again, someone who's not very comfortable swimming, there, there's not a lot of options that you can do at that pool. There's not a baby pool. Zero depth entry is something that you see a lot in community pools. That's something that, that's not there. So the splash pad created that ability for those young swimmers to have something to play. I know, I'm a mom. I have, you know, an array of children. You know, my 12-year-old might have a great time, but my three-year-old, there's not, not a ton for them to do. So that's something that there, it was, it was created a versatile option for families. So with that, we also understood through surveys direct to our membership, also surveys through our Parks Master Plan that was published in 2006, also an update in 2015, that there was the desire for improvements to the pools. So we took a look at what the infrastructure of Gehanna Swimming Pool offered and it provided an opportunity for the splash pad to be part of that pool facility. It also helped us, again, with our staffing situation. The Gehanna Swimming Pool closes once school goes back in session. So our staffing, of course, is predominantly students. So we only have the ability to, to, to staff one pool. With the Hunter's Ridge being a smaller footprint, we have the ability to still offer the Hunter's Ridge Swimming Pool once school goes back in session on the weekends. Typically, the Gehanna Swimming Pool would just close. At this point, the splash pad will remain open for the entire month of August through September, weather permitting into October. So it definitely provides the ability for some additional water play. One other thing that we wanted to make sure, since it was part of the swimming pool, that we had the ability to do some of the fun features. We have a dump bucket that if you're ever there, you'll see a little crowd of kids waiting for that dump bucket to go. Or adults, depending on what time you go. So that it created the ability for us to have an interactive play feature. Oftentimes, if you see one in the community, they're groundwater or ground nozzles rather than those features. Because again, with lifespan of that, of that equipment, we have the ability to, to monitor that as part of the swimming pool. I also, so this, we have, it's called Placer AI. And it shows us some data from visits. So the blue is from 2021 and red is 2022. So we just pulled some data from 8 till noon. Again, that's when the splash pad is open for free. And you'll of course see an incline of participation during those timeframes. So we do have the ability for individuals to utilize it in the morning hours. The next slide you'll see, and this is, this is what we were hoping for, Monday through Friday, you'll see that increase of participation. Again, we have more individuals coming to that facility during the weekdays because there's something for them to do there. So that's definitely something that we wanted to see and are happy that that's, that's coming to fruition. That is the end of my slides. I'm happy to answer any questions or?
I have a question. The Toyota, how much money did they give to, for that splash pad? Because that, that just is an amazing thing.
Yes. So the Toyota Direct, they gave $70,000 for the shade features, which the shade features are not, are not put up. Those are still shipment issues. We're hoping to see them at the end of July. But there will be four shade structures that, thanks to Toyota Direct, will be installed. Again, if there's not a ton of shade there. So if you're, if you're coming for the morning, for the afternoon, it'll, it'll definitely be a nice relief there.
Well, I think we should really be thanking them because that's a wonderful thing to have for our community.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Yes, Mrs. McGregor.
When you have the statistics for the Gehanna Swim Pool, does that include, and maybe it did both years, the Greater Columbus Swim Team, they practice in the morning? Does that include those kids?
That does not include that. So the numbers that are on that, on that spreadsheet are purely membership as well as day passes. Any type of groups, we do have additional groups outside of that as well. That is not included in that number.
Okay, thanks. I had a handful of questions, if that's okay.
Sure.
And I'll just kind of go through them in order. I received a question about camp ages potentially being reduced from prior years and that there weren't as many spots open for pre-kind, children going into kindergarten. And then also on the other end of that spectrum, there was some mention about the core program being eliminated. Could you speak a little bit about that restriction?
Sure. So the core program has actually evolved into, it's called Level Up. So that was available for individuals 12 and over. So that did have an overlap. So 12 to 16, I think, was the, the age range. The reason it didn't run was participation. We have a minimum requirement in order to run a program. So it did not meet the minimum requirement in order for it to go. On the flip side of that, we do have, our summer camp program is predominantly six to 12 years old. And a five-year-old and a six-year-old doesn't sound like a big jump. But if that, if that student has not completed kindergarten or hasn't been involved in that type of setting, it did create some challenges, really for the child's experience, but also for, for counselors as well. Because they do have ratios of one to eight with, with anybody five and under. So it decreases your ratios. It also could potentially, again, we want to make sure that that experience is not only positive for that child, but also for the other children that are participating in camp. So the decision was to create little adventurers. So that incorporated the five-year-old child into that age demographic so that it is only a half day with that age group. Sometimes a half day is, is enough for the, for the child. it is only a half-day. With that age group, sometimes a half-day is enough for the child. It's, again, it might be a new experience for an all-day setting. Our camps are outdoors. It is an outdoor setting. So we want to make sure, again, that it's appropriate for the age. We do have a third-party Jump Bunch does a program that is, you do have the option to do full day. But that's, of course, up to the family, and if they feel like that's appropriate for their child.
Okay, thank you. Staff reductions, I did want to ask, you mentioned a little bit about staffing reductions for camping. Was that due to unfilled positions, or unposted or budget constraints?
Unfilled positions. So we start recruiting in December. Their efforts were extensive, job fairs, postings. Our marketing and communications team worked with us. Our human resource team worked very closely with us. And again, this is something that is, once again, industry-wide. We talked with our peers. It was, it was, it was not impressive, the opposite of impressive. It was staggering how many communities were dealing with similar issues as far as staffing. Some to the point that they either had to reduce, like we did, or cut programs completely. So it was, again, not something that's just here in Gehanna. So we actually just brought on three additional camper, camp counselors this week. So their recruitment efforts continued on once the season started. The problem with that is the orientations that we have, the training that you have, it's, we want to get that done and ultimately before May. March, April is ideal. Sometimes that's not the case. Again, we have students. So if students are away at school, or if students are focused on their extracurriculars or their studies, then, you know, once school is over, we have a big rush to get that orientation in and done. So there's a multitude of reasons why. But it was definitely not at the, less effort to try to get those counselors in. We do have waitlists with our campers. So once we have staff members in place, we do have the ability to add more campers based off of how many counselors we have.
And I guess related to that, are you still hiring guards and camp counselors at this point?
Lifeguards are challenging, because again, we don't have any more classes offered. So we do, previously offered four lifeguard classes. Just recently, there was an individual who was interested in lifeguarding. There was an open training in Delaware. That individual traveled to Delaware to get their certification, and then we were able to bring them on. So it's really based off of how we, how often we have the classes available. And keeping in mind, our staff, our leadership staff are the ones who do the trainings. So that's 40 hours that's taken away from the pool operation in order to train new staff once the season starts. And when we have a reduced staffing already, that creates a challenge. So once the season starts, there's a large focus on the operation.
Okay, thank you. I'm just going to keep going. The non-resident rates that you started in 2021, could you clarify if that's just for membership, or is that also for day pass rates?
That is for both membership and day pass rates.
Okay, thanks. All right. I think that was all the questions that I had. Does anybody else have any questions?
I have.
Yes, Ms. Padova.
Apologies if you mentioned this, but did you say when the comprehensive Parks Master Plan should be wrapped up?
October. So, and that's something that I will present back to you before it's actually published.
Great. I look forward to seeing that.
Anything else? Thank you so much, Director Farrell. I appreciate so much the work that you and your department are doing. My kiddo has been participating in Jump Bunch this year and has had a great time. So we're very happy that you guys are able to offer the courses that you are, and hopefully we'll get the word out to more people about staffing for next year.
I agree. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The second item on our discussion is on animal control code. And I asked if Chief Spence, we've had some issues that have come up in front of a number of us, the administration and council, related to at-large dogs in particular. And so to kind of open up the conversation on this tonight, I wanted to ask Chief Spence if he would talk about the current state of animal control in Gehanna, and give us some highlights and overview of how enforcement is going, what you're seeing, and just any other issues that you would like to discuss.
Okay. Am I on? Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Okay, thank you. So the current state of animal control, part of it is historical. The city at one point had a part-time employee that handled animal control issues. That transitioned at some point, I don't, wasn't able to really find out when that occurred, but transitioned to a contracted employee. And then sometime in late 2000s, I think maybe as late as 2011, that contract was reduced as part of budget, ongoing budget cuts. Since then, for the better part of a decade or more, animal control issues have fallen entirely to the sworn staff to manage. In Gehanna, they're generally complaint-based or call-for-service-based. Our response is within primarily Section 505 of the GCO. That's backed up with Section 955 of the Ohio Revised Code. Generally speaking, the current code as it exists provides us the tools for enforcement. These cases are extremely difficult to manage. They are very time-consuming. They are not simple in any means. We've had several longstanding cases. We also work with other community resources, Franklin County Animal Care and Control, and Columbus Humane, depending on the situation. There are, when it comes to animals in particular, they're viewed as property. They, we just can't seize them. They're, any, any control of an animal or taking of an animal has to be pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code. Search warrant provisions, Fourth Amendment protections, due process, all apply. Generally, we process these through mayor's court. At times, if the case warrants, or potentially we're involving multiple agencies like Columbus Humane or Franklin County Animal Care and Control, we've done those cases at environmental court, Franklin County Municipal Court, the Environmental Division. The, you know, at-large, the interpretation of at-large is very broad in our, in our code. It's an effective enforcement mechanism. It provides us a lot of flexibility in enforcement. It's a minor misdemeanor on a first offense, subsequent offense is a misdemeanor in the second degree. We also have codified in our, in local code, dangerous and vicious language under 50514. We also have nuisance conditions that are prohibited. I think that's 50505. Let me check that to make sure. Yeah, I'm sorry, 50509 are the nuisance conditions. Registration is also in GCO. Also, the immunization required, or rabies vaccine, those are required as well. And again, that's also backed up in Section 955 of the Ohio Revised Code. That being said, biggest problems at-large, if you get on our Facebook page, you see the various dog posts of dogs wanted in their travails through the City of Gehanna. Generally speaking, those are one time. You know, we approach it with a little bit of humor, because our main goal is to get those animals reunited. The longer the animal is in our care and control, the more resources it takes. We have to engage Franklin County. We've got to maintain temperature, make sure that animal has food and water while we await transport to the animal shelter from Franklin County Animal Care and Control. That takes time. It's in our best interest to reunite that animal as quickly as possible. Nothing more. In dealing with these cases over the years, I can tell you, you mess with people's pets, and you mess with people's children, it becomes a very adversarial encounter. These are very adversarial encounters, generally speaking, with those pet owners. No matter the amount of legislation, and I've said this multiple times, you are not going to legislate responsible pet ownership. People will continue to do what they do. We have some habitual situations that we've been dealing with. One in particular, this is the amount of enforcement activity, offense reports, citations that we've generated, going back well over a year. This is not neglect, indifference, or other things that's been characterized. We're not taking this situation seriously. It is very frustrating for us to manage these types of cases. We've taken enforcement action in most every one of these cases. It's a misdemeanor of the second degree. It is not a minor misdemeanor. Please keep in mind, a violation of any one of these codes is not an arrestable offense without a warrant, even if it's committed in our presence. The Ohio Revised Code does not permit us to make an arrest without a warrant. Also, please keep in mind, in Franklin County, the way our bond schedule works, there's a presumption in most misdemeanor cases of recog in almost every case when it comes to a misdemeanor, a misdemeanor offense. There are certain, there are certain exceptions that do apply to that bond schedule in Franklin County. There are far and few between. We can ask for special dispensation. We use that very sparingly, and usually there's some element of violence or potential violence. That's it in a nutshell. Just to give you a little bit of history, we had a, we really struggle in cases where there are not obvious signs of abuse or neglect. If an animal is impounded in Franklin County, and there are some very narrow abilities for us to impound an animal, the owner can come and claim that animal. One of the requirements, they are properly registered, they have a current rabies vaccination through Franklin County, that is verified. If the animal, and I'm not the expert to speak on this, but if the animal is 20% under a prescribed weight, I'm not sure how that prescribed weight is determined. But obviously, there's a science behind it. The animal is not released. So they're not going to release an animal that has obvious signs of abuse and neglect back into an abusive environment. What we may consider abusive environments, there's a very high bar for that. I guess, I guess in closing, you know, and obviously, I'm sure there are a number of comments, I did go through the proposal, or I should say, the summary of various leash laws and the like that was compiled for you. What I would tell you is, some of these are not direct comparisons. For example, under the City of Pickerington, they have a lot lumped under 61801, which is animals running at large, nuisance, dangerous, and vicious, dogs, and hearings. Please keep in mind, under 50514, we do have tether and leash requirements. We have an extensive permitting process that was updated in 2018. Our fines, or I should say, our permit fees were escalated. The insurance requirements were expanded under that previous council. So those aren't, those aren't exactly like comparisons. Some of the other language that is in other municipalities is very vague, and frankly, favors the animal owner, and that is not, that is at-large, where our code is very, very broad and very amelible to citing someone for a violation, where these have a number of, a number of, frankly, you know, outs, or abilities to obtain a dismissal if they were properly scrutinized by legal counsel. So with that, I'll turn it over to questions, I guess.
Thank you, Chief. We appreciate your work, and especially for what you've been, I know, in terms of enforcement on the one particular property that you're referencing tonight.
Yeah, last comment. We certainly, and I don't want to take away, this does impact quality of life in the neighborhoods. We understand that, you know, I'm not a, I'm not a dog owner. You know, frankly, sometimes dogs scare me. Please keep in mind, our officers are engaging with these animals. The last thing we want to have is one of our employees bitten. A good friend of mine was just bitten by his, by his son's dog. Ended up being a trip to urgent care twice for antibiotics. Dog had all of his shots. It was an unfortunate incident. So we understand the quality of life in the neighborhoods. We understand the impact. We understand the fear. And we do take, take action when warranted. But again, whenever we're dealing with these chronic issues, it's taking sworn police officers that are tasked with a lot of things, crime reduction, traffic, traffic management, crash response, critical incident response into long-term habitual issues that are very hard for us to solve.
Thank you. Discussion. Mrs. McGregor.
Two things. I think the dogs are required to be on a leash if they're in a park.
Yes, that is correct. Yeah.
And it seems to me that we change, like, there's something about dogs and sporting events in the parks.
Yeah, the parks are a little bit different. And I remember a little bit of this discussion. But from a standpoint of a park, a park is sort of, and I'm going to use the term quasi-private property, where we can, where we can place rules such as parks are closed after dark. It's public property, but not everybody can come into the swimming pool at midnight. So I mean, there's a, there's a, the reason that a lot of things can be codified that generally wouldn't be codified in the public space, even though it is a public park. So that is correct, that under park code, animals have to be leashed and controlled. We have a lot of sporting events. We have a lot of things. The parks, you know, Academy Park just over the weekend had a, had a number of tournaments, and we had some parking issues up there, because it was so, you think of that park as a giant parking lot, and it was so congested over this past weekend. So that's the reason that those, those things are in park codes.
Is, there was an issue with someone at a sporting event with a dog. And I don't remember, did we, is it that they cannot, the dogs cannot be on the sidelines if there's an activity, if there's a sporting, it was at McCorkle Park. And I remember, I thought we changed something so that they, if there was a sporting event, the dogs were not allowed on the sideline. But do you remember that? Or maybe I misremembered.
I don't remember. We made some changes related to some service animals. That was a while back. I don't remember that specific.
Oh, okay.
So there are ways, if there's a tournament or anything, that we can restrict for pets not to be there at all. And that is the case sometimes, especially if there's a high volume of people. The tournament itself can restrict for no pets.
Okay, that's probably what I remember. I knew it was, okay, thank you.
Sorry, I was wrong with that.
Is that up to the, just as, is that up to the tournament scheduler, to the league? Or is that up to the city?
So we coordinate with the, it's typically our affiliate users. We coordinate with them. So it's not, it's typically, again, with that volume, it's understood that that would be the case.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Is that, are you, okay.
That's it.
Mr. Renner, did you want to?
Yeah, I do. Thank you. And Chief, thank you so much for your edification for all of us, understanding what this is. And I also want to thank the city attorney, who helped me understand a little bit. In 505, and before I go further, I want to also thank our clerk, Jeremy, for putting together the summary, just for public documentation. We do have constituents that are complaining about dogs, you know, running, not just at-large, and I know that that's a term that's, it's in our code, but just not under control. And I think that's the key here, while there might be a slant towards a leash. In fact, I was, you know, a leash law, and I was one of those that was probably in favor. But then when I took a harder look at our code, But then when I took a harder look at our code, 505.01 and Section B, where no person who is the owner of or keeper of any domestic animal shall permit that animal to be out of control at any time or place, even running in its own yard. And I think that, right there, is a de facto leash law. I think that, and if people, our constituents, that have trouble, if they're walking and a dog comes chasing after them, and I think that's where I need help. What do we say to the residents of Gehanna? Do we just say, well, call the police? Or are we going to work on another solution? Because I understand your point, that we have sworn officers that are tasked with a lot of jobs to do, and I don't want to live in a community that's a police state. So where is our balance, and what, so what's our communication to residents about this if they feel threatened by a dog, even though they're just walking on the sidewalk?
Well, I think we've, you know, we've touched on this over the years. It kind of ebbs and flows as, you know, potentially chronic issues become known. You know, you read the key to the enforcement action under 501, 50501B, is that's a very broad brush approach to determining a violation. And all of these other codes, there are a number of caveats, there are a number of counters, there are a number of things that frankly, make, in my estimation, those very difficult to enforce and achieve what we're trying to achieve. As I said very early on, we are never going to legislate responsible pet ownership. There are people out there that, no law, no, and it's clear in all of this, that no matter how many steps we take, no matter how many violations we write, no matter how many enforcement contacts we have, and each one of those resulted in a separate charge, they're still not a responsible pet owner. So how do we, you know, do I wish we get more calls for animal-related? No, because, you know, that's, that's an area that I, that's an area of business I wish we were out of, frankly, because it takes us away from other things. How do we get the word out? You know, I guess we can do more to educate the public in some of our various contacts. I don't want us to see, and you mentioned, you know, policing, I don't want to over-police as well, because that becomes, that becomes an issue, very much so. I said, people are very protective of their animals and of, equally, their children, and can be as fiercely defensive of both, and sometimes more of their animals, frankly. So I don't know what the right answer is in terms of educating the public, adding things that are going to be difficult for us to enforce or result in some unintended consequence when we're responding to these things appropriately. We are taking enforcement action. And frankly, we do do follow-up with complaints. We had a meeting not too long ago with an impacted resident, and explained all of the steps that were taken. You know, frankly, and I don't blame that particular resident, they were, they had reached the end of their limit of frustration. But we still are constrained by the law. The defendant in that case has their due process rights. They have their rights before, you know, in the judicial system that is frankly, you know, not our concern, or, you know, I don't want to say not our concern, but we don't have any impact on that, how the court handles things. All we can do is file the appropriate charge, back it up with solid evidence in each one of these cases. And I point to this as just an example. This is by no means, there's body worn video, there's in-car video, there's other, there are run records, there's various other records attached to these cases. In this particular instance, it's voluminous, and we're still not any closer to a resolution. And there's some, there's some things related to the property, and as it gets into where the animals are housed, and our ability to impact from a property standpoint, again, all of those things factor in. So I guess what I'm saying is, it's not an easy answer.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on this item? Yes, Mr. Weaver?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chief, thank you. Thank you very much for walking us through, and Mr. Clerk, for your research. I certainly hear you when you say that we cannot legislate responsible pet ownership. That, when I quoted you directly in my notes, I was like, oh, that's, yeah. In looking at some of the surrounding communities, was there language that you saw in any of those surrounding communities that you thought might be beneficial to our city? Or is it grab bag, essentially?
You know, I guess when it comes to legislation and putting a tool in a toolbox, I want the simple tool.
Yeah.
You know, we've had other discussions in front of council on how to attack a specific problem through code or through some legislative solution. And it's not always an easy answer, because there's also unintended consequences of passing something or adding something. I looked at some of the research. Again, we do have tether requirements and a lot in nuisance code. Some of these, you know, the city of Pickerington and New Albany, they kind of jumbled everything into one section, so it was kind of hard to parse out. But, you know, I'm not, I'm not an attorney, and I am not permitted to offer a unqualified legal opinion.
Very good.
Somebody drilled that into my head at one point. So there are at least four attorneys in the room.
There's more than that, trust me. There's more than that.
I'm sure there are more in the gallery here, but there are four attorneys. You know, I look at some of the city of Dublin and some of these things where they talk about, they give an exception for direct control. I mean, if I were, if my client were cited in the city of Dublin for any one of these incidents that we could pick out of that have occurred in the city of Gehanna, and they were cited under this, I got a dismissal waiting. I could argue that case all day long, and I don't have to spend four years at law school to learn how to do it. That's failing two years, and then two years of actual law school. You know, there's also a couple of sections of our municipalities that say, "Approach in a menacing fashion." Well, if this is after the fact, how am I supposed to, as the law enforcement officer, how am I supposed to determine in a menacing fashion? That may be in the mind of the person who is making the complaint, but how do I prove that when it comes to actually being in front of a judge or a jury? So a lot of these things throw a number of hurdles in my mind. I don't know what their success rate is in terms of how many times they make, they issue citations under the code, how many successful prosecutions they've had, how many dismissals. But as Mr. Renner pointed out, in our code, "No person who is the owner, keeper of any domestic animal, any domestic animal, shall permit that animal to be out of control at any time or place, even running in its own yard." Very straightforward. So I certainly understand, potentially, where some of the other municipalities came up with the language, what they were trying to, what they were trying to accomplish. But I think simple is better.
Thank you.
Chief, I just want to thank you for your time, and Mr. Clerk, thank you too, for your time in compiling so we could compare some of these. You know, I guess I'll just echo, I think, some of the sentiment of Mr. Renner. I've had some conversations with Chief over the course of the year, as off-leash dogs have caused me some concern in my neighborhood. And I think that, you know, we have sort of two different, almost three different things that we're sort of talking about here. We've got enforcement issues with dogs that are not doing, you know, an owner that is really not doing the right thing with their dogs. We have code, which, upon review and looking, and you know, again, I am not the attorney for the city, but looking at what the code we have is compared to the code of other municipalities, you know, I can understand why we have stronger code language, frankly, than the other communities do. But then the third issue of this is really best practices. And I think what a lot of us kind of agree with is that it's best practices to walk your dog on leash, and that walking your dog off-leash gives concern to passersby. I have gotten feedback from residents who are runners, that they're, you know, that they have dogs approach them. Those of us who have young children, I certainly had a very different view of dogs being walked off-leash when I had a toddler in the park. That definitely, I've never had fear of dogs before, but that started, you know, that changed my perspective on it. So if there's a way for us to use this dialogue to encourage best practices, and to encourage people to remember that, that your dog might be a wonderful animal and a wonderful pet in your home, but that things that might happen out of your control while you're out in public with your animal, and stimuli that you can't control. So I appreciate you entertaining this tonight. I know we have residents that are engaged on this subject, and I certainly don't expect this necessarily to be the end of the discussion, but hopefully this has been pretty thorough. With that, anything else on this topic?
Yeah. Is best practices the same thing as just having respect for your neighbor?
Basically, yeah.
Just, if I may add one comment on these cases, I just want to, you know, the city attorney has reviewed our work, obviously, you know, if there's something that we can do better, if there's something that we can document better in terms of, and something from an evidentiary standpoint, you know, I'm all about that. Whatever makes, whatever makes the agency's work product better is good. And, you know, the city attorney's reviewed what we've done, have, you know, and offered counsel on various things, but I think we are, you know, frankly, doing the best we can. In some of these situations, I think I mentioned, another one that was very difficult in obtaining a search warrant, that went on for well over a year and a half, and it was very difficult. But with that, it, these do take time. They take a lot of time.
I was looking at some of these laws, and most of them are identical or very similar to ours. Some of them mention having a leash, but it's all in the context of a dangerous vicious dog, under the same way that we do. The only one that I've seen that has anything like this is Bexley, and it says, "No owner, carver, keeper, et cetera, of any dog shall permit it to go beyond the premises of the owner unless the dog's on a leash, cord, or tether." Okay, well, leash, cord, or tether, what's it got to be made out of? What if it's twine? How does that help? It's on a leash, cord, or tether, so now the person who wants to have their dog under control is going to carry it, have a little twine leash, tether that they're going to put it on, not more than six feet in length. Are the police going to stop and say, wait a second, that looks like it's five foot eleven inches, I want to measure that leash? Then it goes on to say, "Or is controlled by a person of such age, size, and discretion." My former paralegal was four foot eight. She weighed less than 100 pounds, and she had a 110-pound dog. Does that mean she's not allowed to walk her dog? Is an officer going to stop and say, hey, to me, you don't look like you are suitable age, size, and discretion? Discretion? I'm not sure what that means, to walk this dog. So it just brings up more problems when you start trying to put these restrictions on, is all I want to say. And then it then goes on to talk about the menacing fashion. As you were saying, you have to be of age, size, or discretion to prevent the dog from approaching a person or other animal in a menacing fashion. So if another animal's coming at them, are they allowed to defend themselves? What constitutes menacing versus barking? One person's menacing is another person's, oh, come here, let me give you a tummy rub. You know, so that's, you tell I'm a dog owner. But there are just other problems that come along with this when you do try to become more detailed and more defined, I just say.
Thank you, Mr. Malarsky. All right. Do we feel the need at this point to have this on for committee again, or are we satisfied with tonight's discussion? Okay. All right. Thank you. Moving on to Section C, items from council office. Motion number MT-0014-2022, a motion to amend the rules of procedure of the council of the city of Gehanna, Section 6.30, hearing of visitors, establishing subsection 6.30A in person, and 6.30B via video. I will make this brief, and you are all welcome to weigh in if you want to, but we've talked about this quite a bit. So based on the city attorney's comments, with regard to our last version of this proposed rule, Mr. Clerk, Mr. Van Meter and I worked on creating some edits to this document. So it's the 0707-2022 version, or if you review the clean version. I did send this to Mr. Malarsky earlier today. Mr. Malarsky indicated that this did address the concerns that he had, not to speak to the policy concerns that he had, but that it did speak to the, I guess, legal concerns that you raised.
There is one thing, which, I got this after I talked to you. The part where it says, "The chair reserves the right to end and/or not publish the video should it disrupt a decorum of the meeting or not comply with the requirements," that's the weak link in all this, because that's where I could see if we cut someone off, or if we don't let them say their piece, that's where, that's the linchpin of what I see as a problem of doing something like this.
Yeah, and I can understand that. I think to the point, though, that we were discussing just before the meeting about there being another individual disrupting another municipality's meeting by using profanity, strong profanity at multiple points, that that was the basis for disrupting the decorum. Correct? Is that my understanding?
Well, one time it was that, the other time it was because he accused the city attorney in the public records of not fulfilling his request, loudly accusing.
Yeah.
For the 10th, 11th time. And that was the other time, so.
Yeah. Well, noting that we may need some guidance on whether or not we, what the disruption of the decorum could be in the future, but I think that the intent is that it would, if it does not comply with the requirements 1, 2, and 3 specifically, would be the primary impetus for not publishing the video. The video would still be maintained as a public record, even if it was not published, and, you know, I guess that discretion could be reviewed then in the future and republished in the future, or published at the subsequent meeting. Any discussion? It's my inclination to refer this to vote at the next meeting, and we can just get an up or down on it and move on. Okay. All right. Thank you. If you could just put this on regular agenda. Thank you. Next item is Resolution RES-0020-2022, a resolution designating July 2022 as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Gehanna. I don't, let's see here. Any discussion or edits to the resolution? All right. Does anyone wish for this to be on regular agenda for presentation at next week's meeting? All right, then, on consent. Thank you. Thank you. ORD-0033-2022, an ordinance to accept the final plat for the Crescent at Central Park, Section 2, consisting of four lots and Reserves B and C located on Buckles Court North, parcel ID number 025-013773, current zoning select commercial planned district, SCPD. Larry Kanini, applicant, waiving second reading and declaring an emergency. Mr. Kanini.
Good evening, Larry Kanini, Kanini and Associates. Appreciate the opportunity to make this request of the waiver and emergency reading. We have, as you may all recall, in constructing Buckles Court North, which was the newest phase of the Crescent, where we opened up a section of the medical campus there, just adjacent to two recent buildings that were done, the Walnut Creek Wellness Center that went up a couple of years ago, and then one we just completed about two months ago, the Walnut Creek Surgery Suites. So that was all of the more internal lots that were, in essence, the west side of Buckles Court North. This area now represents what is our final formal plat and lot configuration of the lots that in essence are along the freeway, I-270. Prior to opening this project up, the development team here and myself, both the prior team and the current team, felt that it was probably to our advantage not to pre-design the lot sizes, because then that tends to make the particular users, in this case, the medical users, try to fit a square peg into a round hole. So in essence, what we decided to do was kind of leave that open and not really create our lots or have lot splits or any of that excess work that comes along with those things, lot splits and such. We decided to kind of wait on the users and then allow the users to kind of have a palette to work from to size their buildings and the parking accordingly, because as we all know, medical uses is very parking intense. So we have been fortunate enough to land three different projects. So we have now formally created a plat that creates a Lot 1, a Lot 2, and a Lot 3, along with our submission of engineering for the final section of that street. That street was created as a stub street, because we did not know how far back we would take the street based on the configuration of lots. So that has of course gone through engineering, and that is simply going to be a cul-de-sac termination. And those three lots now, again, have been selected, have been designed by all of the different architectural firms and engineers that are working on these three projects for all of the tenants that we have secured. And when I say tenants, let me preface that, the tenants really are owners. We have been able to create a situation where the doctors will be owning these buildings. So they have made a big investment in our community by doing so. So we got a little bit behind in design. That's part of our own issues in trying to satisfy all the different medical practices and getting them to fit in the buildings, but also we had some delays internally here at the city with the change in guard at the city engineer's office, which delayed some reviews and so on. So in essence, we have a project that is ready to go, ready to shovel in the ground. So we are asking if we could, in fact, waive and have the emergency reading on this plat so we can get prepared to start. The first project that will be on Lot 2, it will be a 45,000-square-foot building with a primary care group, three podiatry groups that are merging here in central Ohio. One is a local podiatrist already here in Gehanna at Beecher. And then we also have a vascular surgeon setting up his practice as well. So we're very excited to get this project going as we are working on the design of the other two. And I think everyone will be extremely pleased with what we've secured in the way of practices, as well as the payroll and such that goes with it. So if I can answer any questions for you all, happy to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Kanini.
Thank you, Vice President.
Discussion? I guess I had a question on the waiver of, for the discharge, the stormwater discharge. I don't know if you or the city would like to speak to that?
I can speak to it from what I recall when working with previous city engineer, and there was previous agreements made prior to my involvement in the project. There's some history obviously to this project. And in essence, there was a commitment made by the city to allow stormwater discharge to the creek, Big Walnut Creek. And that was done in the prior project before I was involved, which would be Buckles Court South, where central Ohio Urology is. And so we had asked if that same premise could be applied to our portion of the project. We are not deviating whatsoever from water quality. We already have a basin in place that will serve as water quality for the entire street, as well as doing all the needs of not only the lots, but the street itself. So that's, and I'm not an engineer, but that is my understanding on my engineer's proposal in the history of the project, so. Is there a city engineer here tonight? Oh, she is, Caitlin's here.
So I know through the council office, there have been some questions that came in about that. So I did some digging this afternoon to see what I could find, because I had not been aware of this ahead of time as well. But there is some documentation from back in 2010 where there was discussion as part of some dedication of Tech Center Drive that through the Buckles Court, that they would, it mentions in there in stormwater, that through code, I think it's 1193, allows for a waiver for stormwater quantity, not quality, as long as their stormwater does flow into the Big Walnut Creek, which for these sites, it does. So therefore, they, per code, they are eligible to get that waiver upon approval by the city engineer, planning commission, and council. And as city engineer, even prior city engineer, we are recommending it, and planning commission has also recommended it. So now we're coming to you all to also ask you to recommend so that they can get the waiver.
Could you speak a little bit about quality, how, like, how the water quality issue is handled? I understand, in terms of stormwater runoff from this parcel?
Yeah, so the stormwater, again, the waiver is just for the, the quantity. The quality is still going to be taken care of through a basin, regional basin that's already, they are near their site, that's set up. So that basin is what will take care of the quality control, getting all the sediment and different, out of that before it's then put into the, the streams.
Thank you, Ms. Ridge. Mrs. McGregor?
If we don't grant the waiver, I mean, just, what's the alternative? I just, I mean, just curious to know what, what else, what would have to be done if we don't grant the waiver?
Then they have additional stormwater thing, items that they're going to have to take care of, that they may have to upsize their basin. It would probably affect the type, the size of the developments that would have to be on there, how much they could, you know, they're going to have to take up some of the land that they have planned out to deal with the parking and the buildings and all those items that Mr. Kanini was talking about. Some of that would have to be taken up to be able to handle some of those items.
So that the discharge will be at a lower rate, is that what?
You're talking about the water quality or the discharge?
No, the, well, it won't change the rate.
If they, if they don't approve the waiver for the quantity.
What, what would happen is we would have to then probably lose one of the lots to create a larger basin than what we have already. And keep in mind, one of the things we committed to when we first brought the project to you folks was the preservation of the corridor of creek between the east side and the west side. And one of the things we did is we agreed to enlarge and, and create almost, I think, over five acres of preservation of trees and creek and all that. Had we not done that, we would have came to you and said, hey, we'd like to push these boundaries into those trees and these boundaries into those creeks to give us more room to do what we've been trying to do. Because we were very limited when Tech Center Drive was built, determined and built back in 2010, 10, 12, 11, 12. That was, that somewhat determined, of course, where the, it was all based on where the bridge crossed over to Morrison over I-270. So that dissected the property into kind of four quadrants. So part of what was determined, predetermined before we were involved, was that road configuration and where the traffic signal went to create Buckles Court South for the central Ohio Urology Building that's been sitting there for probably eight years now. So that kind of created our entry point to what we could do on one side of the creek, and then the other side of the creek is what's on Hamilton, which is primarily floodplain, a good chunk of that. So we are in the midst, of course, of doing a mass grading study to raise that floodplain to make it usable. But we were very much pinched in by the creek to the west and I-270 to the east, to what we could do because of where the signal was already set for Buckles Court South. So again, we agreed to not go into those creeks, or into the creek area, into the woods and so on, and we worked within the framework of the preservation zone we dedicated and I-270. So we're very limited on what we could do on each side of Buckles Court North when we build it. So we worked with engineering on creative ways to make sure we got the bang for our buck out of the land we had to work with. So if we have to go and enlarge a basin to accommodate 150,000 square feet of buildings, we're probably going to lose two more acres, so we lose one of our deals. So that's really why we're here, is, is the reason why we're asking for this, and it already somewhat predetermined by the legislation that was granted when they constructed Tech Center Drive. It was all kind of meant to work together, the idea of this waiver option.
Okay. I just wondered what we were, you know, what the alternative was. Thanks.
Yep.
Did our live stream go out? If I could just pause for just a second.
Apparently, yes, it did.
Any other discussion?
I do.
Yes. Do you want to wait until the live stream's back, or?
Is it coming back?
I don't know.
I can get it back, it's just going to be a minute.
Okay. Mr. Kanini, just while we're waiting for more substantive discussion, I just wanted to thank you for coming before us today and for the work that you're doing on this project.
Very excited, very excited.
Bodes good things for the community.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
For your projects, and I get it, because there's precedence for, you know, everything else. But if we as a city do not get our hands wrapped around stormwater management in a better way, the code that was actually cited actually allows for the city engineer to go green infrastructure. Bioswales are actually starting to fail. Even if we went larger, to your point, I will tell you that the data actually shows that bioswales and biobasins are starting to fail, only because the rainfall that is actually happening and occurring and projected to happen in the future is larger than what we expected. So we have to look as a city at other alternatives, green infrastructures that help promote the water, you know, going down into aquifers. And I appreciate everything that you're doing. And that's why I said, I was trying to draw a line, you know, in parting this, but I, I struggled because I couldn't find the documentations, and I understand that this was not this administration, it was even not the previous administration, it was even, you know, two administrations ago. And I still don't have a clear understanding on how an agreement occurred without it being a public document and without it being by the elected body.
Mr. Renner, I understand that when I was asked to get involved in this project by the Buckles family on behalf of their attorney, I spent probably six months digging into all of the legislation, all the zoning, and, and finding all these documents that had occurred from those prior administrations. So it was my duty and obligation to the family and to the attorney to present these documents to them, and so this is the history. So my duties to them.
Yes.
Is to perform under those.
Yes.
Those documents.
And I, I understand that implicitly.
And I will say this, that particular location, and I'd, I'd be happy to email you soils reports, because obviously over the time now, since we've built the streets, built the buildings, put utilities in, we've done soil reports and soil borings for each of those projects, the roadway and everything. One of the difficulties of doing bioswales or permeable surfaces is there's a lot of shale in that corridor, a lot of rock. So those necessarily won't do the purpose or won't work under that, that geological underbody of that site. So we went to great expense to dig the current basin we have in place to accommodate these four buildings that we're going to be doing. That became very expensive. And needless to say, the delay from a year ago, when we were hoping to get these projects going to now, as we all know, what, what has happened with supplies and inflation and so on, we're looking at a 40% increase in the cost of extending these roads and putting these utilities in that the Buckles are going to have to eat, just to make these deals happen for the city. And I'd hate to see us take, number one, I'd hate to see this go in a direction that would delay it any further legally or otherwise from the Buckles family, let alone the amount of payroll that we're talking about with this 150,000 to 180,000 square feet that's going to be added to what's there. I mean, we're talking a significant, significant payroll that I'd hate to see us all lose and then have this delay even further. So believe me, I, I, you know, I've been doing this a long time, and you know that I am very conscientious in what I do. You know that historically with me. And I'm not going to do anything that's going to reflect poorly on me, on the Buckles or the city. But this is one of those situations where we had to follow what was provided by the previous administrations and the previous two engineers that I worked with. I mean, understand what I've gone through the last two and a half years? Please. I should have thrown, you know, other developers would have thrown in the flag and said, heck with this, I'm going to another city and work, because it's a lot easier. So I put up with a lot around here, and I truly appreciated the cooperation from the new team, the old team, Michael, everybody. But any more delays internally with this, I'm going to lose the Buckles patience, and I don't know how much more I have, because I'm excited to get this stuff going. And, and I'm already working on the next phase, the 41 acres. And we have users lined up, very similar in nature, medical oriented, that want to go there now, because they said, shoot, we missed out on that first phase, how do we get into the next one? So please, understand my position in trying to keep all the balls in the air and keep you folks happy and the clients happy and these doctors happy. It's a tough task, trust me.
Understand, and that's why I began with, I'm trying to draw a line. And so I thank you, I still thank you for public, you know, and I'm already stated on the public record that I'm voting yes for this. I'm fully in support of you getting even the waiver and emergency. I was just trying to divert a little bit and say, and again, not with your project, but with, as a city, we need to really understand stormwater management and in, in combination with what our climate is actually changing.
To, to Rob's credit, previous engineer, prior to John, Rob worked on some residential projects where it makes sense. It's a little bit more difficult to do it in a corporate or commercial type project. It's a little bit more difficult to do it in a corporate or commercial type project. But to his credit, and, and again, we'll look at doing some of that in the next phase if we can, where it makes sense economically. But right now, it's a difficult climate with inflation and cost of pipe and cost of fuel. I mean, it's, it's, it's insane what's going on. And we're very lucky to get these developers and myself and these medical people who, again, are taking an ownership in the business. They're not just coming in and signing a five-year lease, they're putting their money where their mouth is, they're committing to own the building. And they love that opportunity that we're giving them, because a lot of developers don't want that. They want the rental income.
Right.
We're not doing that. We're making them partners in these opportunities, and in most cases, they own it 100%. So they're here for the long haul, beyond the CRA, beyond the tax abatement, all that. So we're really ingraining these people in the community. So the last thing I want to do is go to them and say, hey, sorry, but you got to reduce the size of your building, or you got to buy an extra half acre to do an additional storm basin because they're turning the waiver down.
Yep.
So, okay. I appreciate that, appreciate your understanding.
Okay. Mr. Schnitzer, and then I'll come back around to the ends, yes?
Thanks, Mr. Canini, appreciate the background information. Just a brief question, that, the little pizza wedge, for lack of a better description that we're talking about here, that is the Buckles Track North, how many total acres is that, including the existing development?
Oh, good question.
Ballpark is fine.
Yeah, 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 I'm trying to remember that, originally it was 21 acres.
That works.
Yeah, Wellness Center took, well, the roadway takes up, let's say, an acre and a half, whatever that is. The basin took up an acre. Wellness.
Topographically speaking, it's 20-ish acres or so, yeah.
Right, right.
I, I would contend that much of those 20 acres, given the clay soil, the shale, the topography, I'm somewhat familiar with that area. It's all running off into Big Walnut anyway.
Yeah.
For the most part, there's not going to be a lot of absorption. So I don't, I don't view the request as, as being unreasonable, and if, you know, city administration, including the engineer's office, has looked at it and is recommending that it be discharged, I think that's okay.
Mrs. McGregor?
Thank you for being persistent for the long haul. And I didn't, don't misunderstand my question, I just wondered what, kind of, the total thing of what we were waiving, so what the alternative was, so that was all my only...
Nancy, you know how, you've known me a long time, you know how excited I get, okay? I'm Italian, I'm sorry, I get passionate about what I do.
Let's get a few more trees in there.
Mrs. Angelina?
Well, I want to make a comment, because I think this is probably one of the best projects we've ever had for the city. And for us to make it go further with, without doing anything would be a shame. And so I, I think we ought to move forward on this, and I, I, we trust you, Mr. Canini, to come back through. Now, and, and I would like to ask a question, when will the, the housing component happen?
We have submitted the engineering, which is the infrastructure and the roadway plan, to the staff, City Engineers Department, they're reviewing it now, providing us comments soon. And I'm comfortable to say that myself and the Casta organization, which is the residential developer, we have made the decision to partner together, and we have actually signed an agreement to buy the Buckles out of that 41 acres. So they will no longer be involved, we have agreed to their price so that we can move more rapidly on this project and not be tethered by them and held up by them.
So that would be the next
The 41 acre mixed use area.
And then there'll, then there will potentially be after that, the areas that you would bring in some kind of
Of that, of that 41 acres, we had, you had all approved the 14 acres for the residential.
Right.
That leaves about 26 acres left to be developed. We, of course, shared a master concept plan with you with hotels and retail and such. But as I just said earlier, we are already getting inquiries from medical users who did not take advantage of the first location and are asking about opportunities here. So
Yeah. This is really terrific.
And if I may, Mr. Renner, you were, of course, there at the planning commission meeting a couple weeks ago, when I presented Lot 2 and the FDP for that. And as you know, I shared the information on those disciplines that were in that building, and I'm happy to share, and I can't use specific names, but I will say that we have a large gastro group that is going to build their own building on Lot 1, and we have secured a natural, a national cancer center for Lot 3. I cannot disclose who that is, but those are the three large users that we are trying to accommodate in this plat you're reviewing tonight.
And we need to move on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Canini. Any further discussion tonight? Let's move this forward, I guess, on regular agenda for, with waiver and emergency.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Canini. Section, moving on to Section D of the agenda, items from the Department of Public Service and Engineering, I'm assuming we'll start in order with Resolution, Resolution RES-0016-2022, a resolution adopting the 2022 Sidewalk Maintenance Program area. Engineer Ridge and Director Crawford.
Thank you. Was it catching me? There we go. Thank you. So tonight, we're bringing forward the program area, the sidewalk maintenance program area for the 2022 program. As you know, we had our first, we're in the middle of our first sidewalk program, this would be our second sidewalk program, it's much larger than the first. So we are looking to have council adopt, adopt the, the program area that we've defined for the 2022 program area. Initially, I, I, I don't know that you want me to go through and read all the different places that we have here, but you have an attachment with a map that shows each of those locations. They are spread throughout the city. As you can tell, there are numerous more. We are starting this by going back and looking at our past street programs. So we went back as far as 2010 to see what streets have been done and trying to figure out how many we could get done with the budget that you've approved for the sidewalk, sidewalk program with the ADA funds. Looking at this, we're able to get through multiple past street programs in one of our programs, sidewalk programs, that is. We have a total of 619 parcels that are going to be a part of the 2022 program area. Upon approval of this sidewalk program area, an inspection program will be completed for the purpose of maintaining all the sidewalks that are in those areas, make sure that they're in a good and orderly state of repair. Again, this is to protect the health and safety and welfare of the public, it's the purpose of the sidewalk maintenance program. The property owners within the program area whose sidewalks are in need of repair or replacement will be mailed a notification indicating that there are sidewalk deficiencies, and then that estimated cost will be assessed or paid in full by the property owner as part of the sidewalk maintenance program. Information then on how to opt out of the program or to stay in the sidewalk maintenance program will be provided. This is a similar step of what we've recently discussed that's happened with the 2021 sidewalk program. If you have any other questions, I did want to state, the, the reason that we are going back through, starting with our past street programs, is that as we do our street programs, we are updating the curb ramps and the crosswalks. So the intent is to follow them so that as we go through with the sidewalk program, that we will have a fully compliant, ADA compliant sidewalk or pedestrian path. So that's why we've chosen to follow our street programs. Obviously, since we're going back to 2010, we may run into a few cases where we're still going to have to update some of the, the ramps, but we have been updating them for the last several years. And so as we get closer and closer to our program we have now, the intent is, you know, within six years, we'll get up through our, our current years program, and everything will go a lot smoother and have fully compliant pedestrian facilities throughout the neighborhoods that we're updating for, with each sidewalk program.
Thank you, Ms. Ridge. Discussion on this item? Mr. Renner?
I have one question, I was trying to search through the documents. When are residents going to be sent a notice and all that kind of stuff? When does this start?
So once you guys approve the sidewalk program area, we will be notifying the residents that are within the program area, just that they are in the sidewalk maintenance program. So if this goes through, this is a resolution, so if this goes through next week and passes effective next week, but for the end of the week, hopefully by Wednesday, we are prepared to send out the notifications in mail, so then that we can begin in, beginning of August with beginning inspections, so that they can get through, through those inspections before we get into winter weather, so that we won't run into the delays, I believe, that we ran into last year. So that is the first notice. The notice for the actual defects, projected right now, and again, the actual defects, that's what we've just gone through with the 2021 program, we are looking at potentially having those go out, let me look here, I have the, the schedule up, in February, March timeframe, so early spring, kind of next year, once construction is able to start getting up again, we'll send out those notices so that they can make the update, those who choose to opt out. If they, the owners want to make the repairs themselves, they can do that during the spring, and then we'll be prepared to, by the summer, directly following that, actually construct the 2022 program.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. McGregor?
Just want, this is, how, how mu, how many parcels are in this, the one we're doing this year?
619. Oh, and this, the 21 program.
Yeah, the first program.
It's 200, hmm...
It's just, I just, I know it's a lot bigger, I just, I'm curious to know how many. That's okay, 200 is good enough.
Yeah.
It's a lot more.
Between 200 and 300, I'm trying to remember, I think it's like 218
Okay.
is what I'm thinking.
Thank you.
If I could also add, Ms. Ridge, I know outlined what the projected timeline would be, again, this is a resolution, so if it is adopted by council next week, just notice to those within the, the program area that they're within the program area, information on the program, then we would schedule a town hall, just as we did for those who were within the 2021 program area. Right now, we're projecting that to tentatively be the first week of August, based on when
Yeah, August 2nd.
when the, when the notices go out, so that we can have that town hall and inform everybody within the 2022 program area, how the program works, what to expect, et cetera.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Consent agenda?
Yes.
All right. And then I'm assuming you'll, you'll go through ordinance number ORD-0034-2022, ORD-0035-2022, and ORD-0036-2022 together?
Yes, the next three cuts, yeah. So looking at Gehenna Code Chapter 903, Gehenna Code Chapter 903.04, or Section 903.04, requires that a sidewalk permit and a fee for construction of sidewalk with, for a sidewalk that's within the right-of-way. That fee is collected as part of this sidewalk permit to perform inspection. The right-of-way construction permit is also required whenever someone wants to do sidewalk construction within the right-of-way. So right now, there's two permits required, the sidewalk permit and the right-of-way permit. In order to eliminate this redundancy of permits and improve the efficiency overall for the applicants and also within the city, we would like to obtain, to remove the sidewalk permit. So we propose to remove the sidewalk permit and amend it instead, the fee that's collected for the sidewalk permit to be an inspection fee for the sidewalk. So as part of the right-of-way permit, we would collect the inspection fee when someone does sidewalk repairs within the right-of-way. We normally, we request, like, as part of the sidewalk maintenance program, when someone opts out and wants to do the repairs themselves, now, instead of having to potentially get two permits for that, they would go and just get the right-of-way permit, and we do inspections before concrete gets poured, and then at the completion to make sure that it meets our criteria. This would allow the engineering department to perform those inspections and get paid to perform those inspections. So we're requesting that council issue legislation adopting the proposed amendments for Gehenna Code Section 903.04, which is the permit fees for sidewalk construction. The other code chapter that, and sections that we are looking at are in Chapter 907. So 907.03 is the inspection section, this whole chapter is for driveways and curb cuts. Similar to the sidewalk permit section, there is a driveway approach permit that currently is required for any work that's done in your driveway approach. We also require a right-of-way permit. And again, instead of having that redundancy, we want to eliminate that, allow people just to go in for a right-of-way permit. And the, it, this section of code refers to an inspection fee for driveway approaches, so that inspection fee will still stay and will just be collected, instead of as part of a driveway approach permit, will be collected as part of the right-of-way permit. Again, this is another item that with the sidewalk program, we're going to have several people who are going to have to go through this as well, so this kind of helps speed up that process for them. There's also an amendment to 907.03, which changes the responsible party of the inspectors. It currently says it's the chief building official, but as I mentioned, it's the engineering department that is doing these inspections, so we're, we are changing that to be the responsible director or their designee. There's also in 907.04, a section called Width of Driveway Curb Cuts. This section we're requesting to be removed. The, the first section in 907 actually refers to the standards and requirements that were needed. And so, oh, I'm getting, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead into another one. The width of the driveway and curb cuts specifies the dimensions of the driveway and curb cuts, it specifically references to commercial and industrial establishments only. This also does apply to residential, so we're just wanting to strike out the reference to commercial and, commercial and industrial establishments. So we're requesting to pass legislation for those changes to Chapter 907. Then the last one is to 909.04, which is driveway drainage. And this section in the fee sets forth an inspection fee requirement for driveway construction. However, it refers to Gehenna Code 145.10, which no longer exists. So the administration is proposing to update this section by simply striking that reference to that 145.10.
I have a question on 907.04. So I know you said that it applies to residential currently, but where, like, where? And are we enforcing it on existing residential currently?
Yes. It is per the City of Columbus standards that we adopt and follow.
Okay.
They, they have standards, we try to follow those. I don't know if you can help me out where we started. Since I've been here, it's always been enforced in residential, so maybe Mr. Crawford can help answer that question more.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a specific date as to when maybe those guidelines got updated, but as long as I've been here, we have followed City of Columbus standards and specifications, so I think code was just lagging behind our processes.
I guess, I guess the concern that I have is, what if somebody redid their driveway 10 years ago, and they have no need to redo their driveway right now, and it's a residential, it's a homeowner? If we make this change to our code, I mean, there's no ability for us to waive that, that code requirement for the, for the homeowner that doesn't need to replace their driveway right now. Can, can we consider, I don't like, can we consider?
I, I don't think a resident would be forced into replacing their driveway. Maybe I'm missing, missing the question, but there is a, a part here of the, of the code that says unless otherwise approved by the city engineer. So there's always going to be, you know, one officer So there's always going to be, you know, one-off circumstances that would take, you know, additional review by the city engineer.
And we wouldn't be, this isn't, wouldn't be like a code enforcement item where we would go and get people for. This would be if you're making repairs to your driveway and submitting a right-of-way permit to make repairs to your driveway, this is when we would.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Okay. So this would be for new construction or for people who are redoing?
Replacement.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Anything else on 34, 35, or 36? Chapters 903, 907, 909? No? Okay. On for first reading? No need to come back? And then consent?
Yep.
All right. Perfect. Ordinance number ORD dash zero zero three seven dash twenty twenty-two, an ordinance authorizing the Department of Public Service and Engineering to award and the mayor to enter into contract with Gudunkov Corporation, Inc., for Big Walnut Creek Fiber Loops ST dash one zero nine five. Mr. Crawford?
Yes, thank you. It's Gudunkov.
Thank you.
No problem. So as a brief recap, this is the Big Walnut Fiber Loop Project, which will install roughly 7,500 feet of new conduit and fiber while also utilizing an existing 5,200 feet of conduit that we installed as part of the Big Walnut Trail Section Four project. This conduit is also on the pedestrian bridge that is crossing the Big Walnut. So this will create a redundant connection across the Big Walnut Creek that will create redundancy for city services, safety services, businesses on the network. It has become even more important over the past few months and years with the new MECC location on the West Johnstown, as well as all the data center additions out in New Albany as these companies are looking for pass through the city. So it'll open the door for us for some potential lease or sale opportunities as there are not many crossings across the Big Walnut. So we will have the prime crossing to try and and sell that to to those companies. So the bids were opened on July 1st and were subsequently reviewed. We did receive a total of four bids. Upon our review, we are recommending award of the bid to Gudunkov Corporation, who was the lowest in lowest responsive and responsible bidder. As with all of our construction contracts, we are requesting a 10% contingency with the contract, which will bring the total amount to $533,145. So we are respectfully requesting an ordinance to enter into contract with Gudunkov for the Big Walnut Fiber Loop Project.
Thank you. Could you just explain the difference between the engineer's estimate and the contract and the requested amount?
Yes, so the engineer's estimate is the estimate that the engineer's office puts together. That is our best guess as to what the the bids would come in as. It gives the bidders an idea of what we're looking for, but also protects us should the costs exceed our engineer's estimate, which could potentially exceed our budget. And then we would have the opportunity to not award the contract or rebid the contract should it exceed exceed the engineer's estimate. We did add an additional 10% on top of that as well for any unforeseen costs within the construction.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Any discussion? Mr. Schetzer?
Just a quick question. So Grant, there's a number of, I guess, sort of a map within one of the exhibits locating, or I'm sorry, there's a location map that's broader in view, and then there's kind of some drill downs into existing intersections and things like that. Just a very general question. As it runs along Section Four, it appears to be depicted in the various items there, is that intended to go next to the bike path or underneath the bike path?
So that is the existing conduit that is next to the bike path. I believe it does cross under the bike path in certain locations, but that is the the previously existing conduit that was installed as part of that project.
So they would just fish it through that?
Yes. They will also be installing, oh, the the name escapes me. It's, it's like a sock that has holes inside of it, inside the conduit, so that you can slip in additional fibers and keep them all separate, which allow us that greater opportunity to lease space to other carriers.
Okay. So residents shouldn't anticipate any disruption in the path or anything like that as this is occurring?
I would say no, there may be some minor impacts when the contractor is out there physically pulling it in, but nothing substantial by any means whatsoever.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Great. Thank you. On for first reading at the next meeting, no need to come back, and then on consent for at the subsequent meeting? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Director Crawford. Section E, Items from the Department of Planning. We have one item tonight, ordinance ORD dash zero zero three eight dash twenty twenty-two. Director Blackford?
Yeah, I'll make this quick since this should be pretty easy. You just heard from Service and Engineering about their permit consolidation. So in order for that to happen, building needs to update their fee schedule because we no longer need the driveway approach and sidewalk permits, because that's all part of the right-of-way. That's it? That's all it is?
That's it. All right. Any questions for Director Blackford?
No.
All right. And this would need to go on for first, no need to come back, consent at second meeting. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you all very much.
Section F of the agenda, Items from the Department of Administrative Services. Director Volmer, are you going in order as listed on the agenda?
Sure. Whatever you'd like.
Okay. So the first item on the agenda is Resolution RES dash zero zero two one dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the transfer of funds.
I'm here on behalf of Director Burry and myself to request a resolution for transfer appropriations from the Finance Contract Services accounts to finance full-time wages account accounts. As you know, we started implementing a complete finance, HR, and payroll system. They were doing that in 2018 when I came. During that time, in 2019, the full-time payroll coordinator resigned. At that time, the Departments of Finance and HR, again, were in the middle of implementing those systems. And so while we were implementing those systems, our current systems, which are antiquated, had to continue to be used to process payroll. The city contracted with a payroll consultant who previously worked in the Department of Finance in order to immediately cover this vacancy as that consultant understood our current systems. In addition, she also helped implement our current systems that are fully functioning at this time, with the exception of one, the police schedule, the police scheduler, also known as telestaff, is the remainder of that project left to implement, and that's anticipated to be implemented by the end of the year. An analysis of the payroll analyst position was performed, and it was determined that a full-time payroll analyst is needed to perform the payroll function for the city. The payroll function includes processing payroll with proper withholdings and benefit deductions on a bi-weekly basis and all the associated reporting in the backend on the off-payroll week. In addition, the payroll analysts will assist with maintaining the payroll system and part of the HR system as well. So Director Burry and I are respectfully requesting to transfer existing funds from the Finance Contract Services to the finance full-time wages.
Thank you, Director Volmer. Any discussion on this item? All right. Consent agenda? All right. Thank you. Ordinance ORD dash zero zero three nine dash twenty twenty-two and ORD dash zero zero four zero dash twenty twenty-two. I'm assuming you'd like to take those together?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
These two ordinances are to have the mayor sign the Fraternal Order of Police contract and then the request for supplemental appropriation to ensure the contract is implemented correctly. The City of Gehanna and the FOP Lodge Nine have reached a tentative agreement on the 2022 to 2024 contract, and the bargaining unit, which includes the officers and the supervisors, have voted in favor of adopting that successor agreement. So I'll go over some of the big changes to that contract and then come back to the money part. So similar to the OLC contract, we are standardizing our nondiscrimination language. In the internal investigations section, the city was able to secure that complaint investigations received from a known source increased from 45 to 90 days. So individuals have 90 days to file a complaint on a member of the FOP bargaining unit. In addition, the members will be received, we codify that the members will receive a copy of the complaint or summary of facts to be provided to them 24 hours prior to any internal investigation questioning. That is a practice that occurs now, so that is just being added. In Article 11, Corrective Action in Records, there was a change to how how many years a suspension of record can be kept in a file. So suspensions of five years or less will stay in the file for three years, and suspensions of more than five years will now remain in files for five years. That's an increase of two years. And then the safety director can also add an additional two years based on the seriousness of the offense. In the promotions language, we standardized the language between sergeant and lieutenant, removed the written exam component. And in assignments and seniority, we removed some non-existing language surrounding a K-9 and then allowed for interim shift bidding when a premium shift becomes available before probationary officer is placed on that shift. A premium shift are ones with days off that surround the weekend. Wages for 2022 is 3%, which is retro back to January 1st, followed by 3.25 and another 3.25 in the out years. A signing bonus of $750 in year two and $500 in year three, and that money can be added into a member's HSA. We established step three for the ranks of sergeant and lieutenant to be more competitive in the Lodge Nine agencies. In addition, we added, similar to the OLC, that the annual service credit can be added to a member's HSA. For hours of work in overtime, there was some clarification in addition that in order to receive seventh-day pay, officers must actually work three hours and not simply receive a three hours of pay. And added that special mission-specific enforcement programs are not subject to seniority considerations when in signing overtime. In uniforms, we agreed to create a pilot program to establish a uniform committee. As you know, police uniforms have come quite full circle in the past couple of years, so it was important for both parties to add a uniform committee so that our uniforms can remain standard. In holidays, we elimination of President's Day with the addition of Juneteenth and then the renaming of Columbus Day. In insurance, similar to the unclassified in the OLC contract, a high deductible plan will begin in 2023 with HSA contributions from the city for $2,000 for individuals and $4,000 for the other three plans. After expiration of the agreement, the city agreed to provide at least half of the deductible or whatever other city employees receive. This is the same language that the OLC contract voted for. Again, our goal is to standardize insurance language throughout all city groups. And then in sick and injury leave, we allow for cash out of up to 120 hours of sick leave at half the rate of pay as long as members maintain a an amount in their bank. And then there's a list on my report of the other articles that have no changes or just minor word changes clarifying chair man to chair person, his/her, items like that. The estimated three-year cost impact with estimated overtime is between 1.7 and 1.8 million dollars. That includes cost savings from the sick leave buyout and the insurance change. So the second ordinance on there is supplemental requesting the amounts of $102,950 from the unencumbered unappropriated fund of the general fund, fund balance of the general fund, to various overtime accounts, and then $19,500 from the unappropriated unencumbered balance of the police pension fund. Those two amounts are needed to implement the new contract. The reason there's not additional requests for salary in the supplemental appropriation is because the division is carrying three vacancies right now that we're working to fill, and those have been funded the full year, so that savings and salary benefits is being used for the retro pay as well. In order to meet served filing deadlines, it is requested this legislation be passed on emergency and waiver. In addition, this will allow contract terms to begin immediately upon passage and allow those members to receive their back pay in a timely manner. Happy to answer any questions, and Chief Spence is here as well.
Any discussion on the side of Mr. Schetzer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Director Volmer, thank you for the report. Just a question regarding the changes of the holidays. Was that initiated by the city or was it initiated by the lodge?
That was initiated by the city when we added Juneteenth. You'll recall that the end of last year, we added Juneteenth into the unclassified ordinance.
Sure.
So that's to standardize the holidays.
Now, I understand this is essentially a done deal, but I guess my question, the basis for it is, was there any consideration to when that holiday may fall, perhaps during Creekside Blues and Jazz Festival and potentially running up the cost for our sworn staff?
Yes. That was, that was a discussion. We also had the discussion with Visika Hannah and what the ramifications could be to them as we might need to look at whether or not some of those additional added and above costs are passed along. But we did look at the calendar out for a few years to see exactly how that would impact.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Thank you for your diligence in negotiating this, and thank you to union members for their work on on reaching an agreement at the bargaining table. We appreciate that, and I understand that the health insurance issue is a sticky subject, and I'm glad that we were able to come to terms on that. So you have requested waiver and emergency. Any, do we have, does anybody want this on regular, or are we comfortable with consent on this item?
I'm fine with consent.
Yes, okay. So we'll have it on consent agenda at next week's meeting.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything else on the agenda? All right, guys, we're adjourned. Good job.